Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
That's okay.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Exeter Planning Board of Thursday, September 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM, the No-Wake Room, to order and start with introducing the members of the board. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board, and I turn to...
Aaron Brown, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Lynn English.
Nancy Valantra, Select Board.
Pete Cameron Clark.
John Gruder.
Thank you. We have several sets of minutes to approve this evening because we had some busy meetings. In respect to the people, not make them wait any longer than necessary, we decided to chair them. And Barbara says, "You're going to get them done tonight." It's a, "Okay, Barb." So, we're going to start with 8th of June and ask if there's any corrections or notes or something we need to be concerned about.
Which one are we doing first?
8th of June.
The 8th?
June 8.
Yeah, right. I have a couple of there.
Oldest to the newest.
But it'll be really quick.
Good.
Okay. Heard that before. Excuse me.
We all set?
Yes.
Well, line 27. The motion passed 5 to 0, although there were six of us here. Who abstained, or should that really be six? Says all were in favor, but then there were six board members present. So I think that should be 6-0-0 and not 5-0-0.
I'm lost.
Well, I don't know that...
Line 27.
Line...
Someone might have abstained, and we just have to go back and look at the video.
Well, okay.
Talking about the vote.
But all the others were 6-0, 6-0, 6-0.
With their events... You guys are all here, aren't you?
All right.
John, Jen's not here.
Someone come in late?
Jen's not here. Jen's not here to tell us if she voted or not.
Yeah.
All right.
So maybe check the tape?
That's there. That's what you do if it's that...
Check the tape and adjust if necessary.
I mean, it passed either way, but if it's that important...
No, forget it. I withdraw it. Now, this is...
Maybe someone was late.
Or maybe someone just didn't raise their hand. Or they raised his left hand and not his right hand.
Or didn't speak loud enough in voice.
Okay. All right. I think we... Let's pass on to the next one.
All right. Next.
Next.
This goes to line 104.
104.
And line 60. In the line 60, it talks about "the lot." And in line 104, it talks about "the lots." It's either singular or plural. I think it's plural, but that's okay. If no one else is troubled with it, I withdraw it.
What do you... I get... You're right about lots, but where are you saying "lot"?
Well, on line 60, it's "The lot shall be deemed unbuildable." And then in line 104, it's "the lots," in plural. I think it's the plural, but that's okay. Don't worry about it. Most of these I've crossed out. 197, let me see.
Do you remember that one?
I think, Pete, I'm reading just to be... Because you bring it up, and then you don't want to talk about it. But I want to talk about it. So 57, if you go above there, it's going from to a three-acre lot, one acre, one lot to three lots? So you can't say the whole thing's not built. Because today it's buildable. You don't have to subdivide to build on it. You can put a shed on it. So I think it should say, like, "new lot," maybe?
Yeah, that's true.
Well, there just seems to be a little inconsistency.
Sure. I agree.
And is it that important? No?
I mean, it's more important as the CUP part.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is in there.
Yeah.
But if you bring it up, we kind of talk about it, right?
Well, we brought it up and...
Oh, thank you. It's fun to have paper, isn't it?
Uh, let's see.
I use that.
240, 228. Let's see what that is. Oh, no. Okay, that was again where the motion was 6 to 0.
Really, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that...
Both, you can't have a person that made the motion and seconded it. Did you catch that? On 228, Ms. Valantra motioned to table. Ms. Valantra seconded the motion.
And I can't tell you which one I did. Because I didn't catch that either.
So someone...
She's good.
Usually can't... Yeah.
Did you use a different hand?
Yeah, that's what I did.
She could be civil, you know?
No, quite that bad.
So just check the tape.
Yeah, okay, because I really don't remember.
Correct that, whoever made the motions. And the last one was... The sentence, "They would meet with conservation." I think that's the Conservation...
Committee.
Committee, and I would suggest we add the word...
That one we should, yeah.
Committee there, following the word "conservation."
Commission.
Commission.
Or commission, or whatever it is.
Okay.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's it. There are others, but they're de minimis, and I chose not to.
Anybody else have...
One, and it's more a question than anything. On line 217, Mr. Sharples read out loud a letter from 3 Webster Avenue. Should that include the name of the person? It was Dorian and Shun Chester. Does it matter then to get it? This is a question. Sorry, Aaron. Just a question.
It's in the file.
Okay. It's in other ones. That's how I thought it.
You could still find out. I mean, maybe it wouldn't be bad to put in... It wouldn't be bad to put in there?
Okay, then I...
I think it should.
I would ask that we add Dorian and Shun Chester.
If somebody speaks, we require...
Of 3 Webster Avenue.
Their name. That's the same as speaking, right?
Got it.
Yep.
Can I read through 204?
Yes, that's all yours.
Line 204, "Carts should be closed."
204?
Yeah. "To change into their golf clothes on the street, not their golf carts."
Really?
Yeah, because she was sort of humiliated by that.
What is this?
Some of these golfers.
Hey.
Some beach boys.
We're country tonight.
The red zone over there. The red light district on J.D. Hill.
Do you want me to move? We adopt them with the changes? We've discussed.
Please.
Yeah.
Sure.
Please.
Also move it.
Second.
Okay. Those in... Voice vote, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, take care of those. Good. Our next set will be June 22, 2023.
You go down with him.
That was it. Glenn is here, John, Nancy. Ooh, that was four of us. That make it, huh?
Yeah, that was the three men of meeting, I think.
Oh, it's a one-page deal here. Okay, yeah. Yes, the speaker will be okay. Accept the motion.
I move to accept the June 22, 2023...
Excuse me just a minute, please.
Well, she can still motion, all right.
53?
Yes.
There were only four members there, but yet the vote was 6 to 0.
Oh, should be four. Good catch, Pete.
You got that one.
You're a numbers guy, Pete.
He is a numbers guy. Okay for me to try again?
Yes, please.
I move to accept the June 22, 2023 draft meeting minutes for the Planning Board as amended.
Second.
Moved in a second. Thank you, John. Voice vote again. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, they stand now as amended. July 13.
I just fell off two things, but I don't know where to find it. First one's line 80.
1, 2... Oh, Aaron Brown was there.
5. I think it's line 85. Let me get through. Yeah, so line 85, it just says Cory of 35 J.D. Hill, and that would be Cory Stevens. And Mr. Scifidi's name is Ms. Velt in a few places. I'll tell you. Line 119, Paul Scifidi. And yes, that's 119. And then... Oh, I missed the one on 129. Thanks, Glenn. There's another one on line 129. Line 158. And that's all I have.
Gwen, anything?
Uh, that was my only...
Okay.
239? Mr. Sharples asked about pushback. I'm not quite sure I know what pushback, if that context is.
Mr. Scam indicated the elevation in spite...
You didn't say 139?
239.
Which one are we on? We're on... I thought we were on July 13. Oh, all right. I'd already moved on. Sorry.
Page 7 or 14.
Okay, it was already on the next one.
It's hard. He's the applicant tonight, too. We're in trouble.
239. What was before? This is getting dangerous. Oh, yeah. Like...
Pushback about the whole project.
I wouldn't have said "pushback," but it's like head pressure. When you have a pipe, even if it goes gravity-fed down there, if you have so much head pressure that builds up into something, it will actually overcome the gravity and actually push it back the other way.
Yes.
Because, you know, that's... Yeah, that's... Well, maybe I said "pushback." Like, you know, it pushes the water back so it flows in the opposite direction because of the head pressure pushing down on the... Whatever. I just didn't know what it meant.
Okay.
Could we maybe have a better term in there?
Yeah, I don't know.
You think that's what you said?
Probably what I said. And I probably added "head pressure" to "pushback."
You could say "help water push back," but...
That'd be like backflow, too, right?
Yeah, could be a backflow, yeah. Backflow.
The heck they call those foot valves?
Foot valves.
Yeah.
I don't think I was that smart that night, though, when you said that. Could we go to 311?
Okay. 311. Yep, overwhelmed.
Sugar maples, tulip trees, and new... And that's a total word. I don't know what a cultivar is of the American elm. Or, Gwen, maybe you...
Yeah, cultivars are...
Kind of American elm? It's a variety of an American elm. Okay, I just didn't... That's fine, then.
We're expanding vocabulary.
Yeah, you're...
Yeah, that's... And then we have one, let's see, 377, it looks like.
277.
The swathing?
At the top of the page. Page 8.
Two-thirds of the way down.
377.
Oh, 377.
On page 10 of 14.
That's different. I'm getting like Mr. Sharples here.
And there's a word there, "dissuading." I'm sure everybody knows what that means, but I don't. Dissuading a left turn.
Discouraging?
Yeah, discouraging. "Discouraging" might be a better word, yeah. Did you make...
But what did he say?
All right. If no one else is troubled with it...
No, it's a... Yeah, we don't want people to take a left...
Yeah, we do what we wanted them not to do.
We would tax them.
And on 375, I don't believe I said "right." I said "left."
Oh.
Okay.
Left-hand turns, because if drivers can take a left turn, they will. I was concerned about left-hand turns, not about right. So right becomes left? Yep.
Yeah, you're going south.
On 375. North becomes south.
Two wrongs don't make a right, but three lefts.
East becomes west.
They do. You're right.
What direction is 27 going? Go to the point like south, southeast.
Okay. Would you like to move them?
Sure.
Sure.
I move that we adopt, or we approve the Planning Board minutes of July 13, 2023, with the suggestions discussed.
Second.
Move to second. Thank you, Jen. Jen, excuse me.
It's okay.
That's Gwen.
Oh, that was Nancy.
So I said, "Thank you." I know my name. Boy, I'm getting full of all the names.
You say "thank you."
I don't know.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now, we have the exciting group minutes from August 24.
August 10.
Yeah, the 10th.
The 10th.
August 7.
Yes, you can take the 24th, but it's also the 7th.
Okay.
Do you not have it? Gwen has an extra copy, and I have the screen.
Okay. Yeah, okay, let's do the 10th. August 10.
This is the public hearing.
Okay.
CIP.
One silly little, just a typo. On 102, line 102, just delete that comma after concerns. That's a minor one. I don't know if on line 245...
245.
245, "After $90,000," I think that may, maybe meant...
In...
In?
In incentives, yeah. Know that approximately the incentives for replacing subjects will be advanced. Okay.
Is or are incentives? Is an incentive? Is an A or...
Is that an incentive?
No, it's 90 grand of it, isn't it? 90 grand of it is comprised of incentive money?
Yeah, maybe he's right, then. Is incentives...
Could be all.
Yeah. Know that approximately 90,000...
Is incentive.
Is incentive for...
Is incentive, or should I say incentives?
Is an incentive? Do we talk about that 90,000 before that?
Serves as an incentive for...
Ooh, that's better.
Is an incentive.
Or just an incentive?
Yeah, incentive.
Change "is" to "an."
Serve as water treatment. Let's look in here.
But that came out of...
Right.
You're saying incentive funds? Or is incentive money?
Drinking water.
They're talking about the $90,000.
Yes.
Yep.
But where did we talk about 90,000 before that?
I think it's earlier in the presentation.
I hope it is, yeah.
He had all kinds of money. I don't know which were, but...
Right.
Well, his slides. Head on to slides.
I think it starts at 238 there.
Doesn't... It's just... If you read it, it sounds like that $90,000 number came up someplace prior.
Number, page 2. Get in there. Take some minutes. Okay, let's see what they say in the CIP.
Okay.
Glasses don't work. It's very tiny, even with reading glasses. It's showing existing ground. I'm just looking for 90,000 to see what jumps out at me. Can you see any better than me? This is really tiny. I don't see the 90,000 there at all. Oh, why is that over here? Okay, anybody else want to look at the CIP?
It says page 17. Are you on page 17?
In the CIP book, I'm looking at...
Page 17? It references page 17. On page 240, line 240.
Of the book, we're looking at that time.
I will still check page 17. That's the nitrogen.
Yeah, is that what this is?
What are you asking about this? What is it?
No.
We're just trying to...
90,000 is a...
Yeah, but it's the word "app," is it like, is that an incentive?
Is or in?
There's just one, that one word.
Is incentives for replacing subject systems.
Okay, so we're fine.
It's an incentive. I think he was thinking about the about $15,000 each, six of them. Six times 15 is 90,000. So I think that's what he said. Noted that approximately 90,000 is incentives for replacing subject systems. But I mean, grammatically, you'd probably say, "is an incentive..."
Or "is incentive funds?" Is made up of incentive funds?
Well, that's what it's saying, yes.
I think it reads okay.
I understand it.
Let's leave it the way it is.
All right.
Next?
Well, hang on.
I'm hanging on. Anybody else can chime in while...
142?
Oops, 142. He's backing up.
Three, reverse.
142, to start the program.
Well, the "he" there, I asked a question, but "he," I didn't give the answer. I think it was Assistant Chief that gave the answer.
I don't understand your pleasure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Justin.
Yeah.
Yeah, Justin answered that.
Yes.
So instead of "he," changed to "Justin Pizon." Okay. And then line 200.
200. Be right about at the bottom of page.
Or associated...
Or associated what?
Associated...
And I looked at the top of the next page, and that's...
Manhattan Road Parking Lot Expansion, page 5.
I just wasn't sure what, whether there was something that was left out.
Well, he handed an extra sheet that night.
Do we want to check a tape or delete the line?
Well, was there CIP request sheet? I just don't... I don't remember.
I don't either, so I can't answer. I can bring my notes to that.
Therefore, I think...
It's probably not needed.
What?
It's probably not even needed.
Yeah, I think we strike the whole sentence.
Yeah, and that was the night I was remote, so no. I was set a corner.
Or the whole... Several words there.
8, yeah.
Line 200.
Yes, just strike line 200 in its entirety.
Okay.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Any other comments? Concerns, questions, or willingness to make a motion?
I... Oh, go ahead. You go.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of August 10, 2023, and making the changes that were noted tonight.
Second.
Okay. Second?
Gwen.
Okay, thank you.
I made the motion, Nancy.
Gwen made the motion, Nancy, second.
Yes, Nancy is. Okay. Voiceful, those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Nay? Abstentions? Motion carries? Unanimous? Again?
To the twenty-fourth.
Now, we're going to go to the twenty-fourth of August.
I have to admit, I've not read them, but that's okay.
And I wasn't at the meeting.
What, do we look like your priest?
Is this the?
Five zero, well, how many were there?
Assistant town manager.
One, two, three, two. I, I was not.
Four, five, once five were there, so. Five zero zero, good, okay, the numbers look to be right.
Are we going forward with this? I have a couple of changes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um.
Please, Gwen.
On line sixty-five, could we just put, after Melissa Roy, maybe in parentheses, Assistant Town Manager, so people know who she is?
Okay.
And. There are a couple, um, hold on a second. It's real long. And in the first place, this is noted. Yeah, on line one nineteen.
One nineteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
It should read section nine point three four, capital F, which it is, um, on dot one two, and that's in zoning, isn't it?
It is.
Isn't the fertilizer?
Yeah.
Isn't that in zoning?
Yeah.
It has it in site plan review and subdivision, right?
No. Nope, that's in zoning.
So that, and there, it's in here, in a few places. So it's on like one nineteen, or four sixty, four seventy-eight.
Well, it says of the site plan review and subdivision regulations.
But it's in zoning.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not on that, huh? It's not in both?
No. If it is, it's not.
No, no.
It's a different number.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's not.
So that one on.
The fertilizer's in the order.
Four seventy-eight should be a capital F rather than a lowercase, right?
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
So four sixty, four seventy-eight, yeah.
Do you think the applicant said it wrong?
Four sixty-one.
Do you think the applicant said it wrong?
Maybe.
If it's repeated, it might be the applicant misspeaking.
Yeah, could be. So the age-old question.
Well, Daniel wouldn't have.
Do you correct what was said?
Daniel wouldn't have come up with that, I don't think.
I don't think so.
You know what I mean?
No, I think he probably said that.
Yeah.
I just know what he corrected.
So instead of correcting it, can there be a note, like a note?
I guess you can acknowledge it in brackets.
Yeah, instead of.
You can just put in like a bracket, say zoning ordinance.
There you go, S I C.
Yeah.
We got it with bleeding for something, got something wrong, S I C.
Preserve the actual application, but have it corrected, so it's not confusing.
Right, someone goes back and edits. Um, and then on line five hundred, it starts off with a seven, and I don't know what that, I don't know what that means.
One, two.
And then it goes to seven, I don't, I'm not sure what that is.
Line five hundred?
Yeah.
Seven, the number seven.
Yeah, the number seven, and I'm not sure where.
Is that first or one, two?
Oh, you know, you, oh, hmm. It was a condition. What? Oh, no, yeah, there was some conditions before that were numbered, but seven.
No, that's.
Was it seven on the agenda?
I think so.
That's what that.
I don't have the agenda with me, but it was when you wanted to talk to us about.
It was probably around seven on the agenda.
Yeah, I would bet that's it.
Maybe he does that.
Well, you go back to page four forty-one, and that has the number six.
Yeah, three seventy-five is five.
Yeah.
Oh.
Four forty-one is six.
You're right, yep.
So he just puts it as the agenda item.
Yeah.
Oh.
Cut and paste, probably.
I didn't even catch that one, okay.
Off the agenda, yeah.
Okay, seven on it. Okay, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'm going to get back to the first page. Which, we're on the twenty-fourth, I move to approve the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, draft meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Voiceful, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Ah, one abstention.
Wasn't there.
Weren't there.
So is Glareps not coming, you think?
They.
Not coming to Exeter?
Oh. Uh, I don't know definitively on that, I've heard.
It sounded like.
Different.
They might be, but.
Yeah.
They're looking for a buyer, because there's a plan for warehouse, so you're already, you need a warehouse, you could.
Not only many people need a warehouse.
There's a lot that's been available four times.
Yeah.
And it can be yours.
See, as a broker, you can make money on those deals, that's called churning. Keep turning the lot over every couple of years.
Why don't you give them a call?
Yeah.
All right, no, no, wait a minute. I have two copies of August twenty-fourth, that's what happened.
Yeah.
We wrote the thumbnails. All right.
That may be the first time.
New business.
That we've been caught up on minutes.
In a long time, yeah.
In a long time.
The application of Town of Exeter for a lot line adjustment between the properties located at Four Hampton Road and Eight Hampton Road. Subdivert properties are located in the N V Neighborhood Professional Zoning District, Tax Map Parcels, numbered ninety-six dash four and ninety-six dash six. It's planning case, planning board case number twenty-three dash fourteen. And is the case ready to be heard, Dave?
In my opinion.
Well, who would like to make a motion to hear this case?
I will.
Okay, second?
I'll save it.
Second.
Thank you.
No conflict of.
Those, okay, those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, thank you, the ayes have it. Hey, would you like to?
So before the applicant speaks, can we ask the town planner to read his memo?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, as you stated.
Which hat does he wear? Yeah.
Uh, the applicant is seeking a lot line adjustment. The Town of Exeter is a party to it, well, which I'll explain when I, when I show you the, when I become the applicant and show you the proposal. But the owner of the property is Exeter N H Prop LLC, and provided as part of your packet was a letter of authorization, and I'll just read it. I, Joel Landau, authorized representative for the owner of the property located Eight Hampton Road, Exeter, New Hampshire, Tax Map Parcel 69 dash six, do hereby consent to and authorize a duly authorized representative of the Town of Exeter of Ten Front Street, Exeter, to present the proposed lot line adjustment application to the Exeter Planning Board for consideration. This is a boundary line adjustment, no new lots are being created, there's two lots involved, and there's going to be two lots after. It is simply moving a lot line, which I'll explain in a minute, and I am the duly authorized representative from Exeter, so. I'll just hop up there and explain what's going on.
Oh, we got a picture.
Yeah, I pulled up the aerial just to get you a sense before we go to the plan, because this gives you an idea of, of where we are. And right here, you'll see the yellow, that is Hampton Road, right here. This is Holland Way, right here. Here's the new Acadia Lane, our failing new now, and D T C Lawyers is here, this was, you know, you've seen that, that was, you know, the sixty-eight units or so. This is our rec park, right here, here's the community pool, tennis courts and pickleball now, these are the fields. And then this is recently purchased, this is Churchill's, but we recently purchased Ten Hampton Road here. So we own this piece here, and we own this lot here, it's like a flag-shaped lot. Well, Planet Playground, you'll see, right here, is actually owned, when we go to the thing, you'll see, it is actually owned by this facility, the Exeter Center. They have like a flag lot that goes all the way to here, down here, and then comes back here and goes like that. So they own this approximately five acres or so. We have had Planet Playground on their property for as long as.
Twenty-four, twenty years?
You can remember, it's never been on the town property. And it has, through a, an analysis of the parks, you know, they do, the Parks Department does kind of analysis, does, you know, safety inspections of the parks to see, and this one is, is aging and needs, you know, needs some work. But before the town would want to invest in something, they would want it on their own property. And we've approached the owners a couple of times, there's been a couple of owners, got close a couple of times, but this current owner is willing to, to work with us and, you know, do a lot line adjustment to, for us to own the piece, and let me just, I'm going to go over here and turn it, turn to the subdivision plan.
Sight. The applicant's missing speaking.
So this is the piece where I was talking about, on, you know, the piece where the health facility is.
Yes.
This is the parking lot, right here, the pools here, tennis courts, the field, here's Planet Playground, right here. We did not own it, because they own this, right to there. Now, we're proposing carving off approximately nineteen thousand square feet. There's a stone wall here that was built that defines the, you know, outer limits of the playground, but that stone wall, which, you know, is not a property line, but it is proposed. The property line follows that stone wall along, and then there'll be iron rods set, according to the plan, along that wall, and this will become the town property. And it's a lot line adjustment, no public hearing is required, but we did notice of others, and anyone can be heard upon request, we did not receive any requests. And usually with lot line adjustments or minor subdivisions, usually have two conditions of approval, which are, monumentation shall be set, I mean, you could put that on there, we're going to set it, it's ours, it's our responsibility, the Town of Exeter, so we will set those pins for our benefit as well. I mean, I know there's a stone wall there, it's probably not going to go anywhere, but we should set the pins. And then the other one is the D W G file, which we paid for this survey on, so the Town of Exeter actually paid to have this work done as part of the, a part of the agreement to, to purchase this land. And so we already, you know, we have the D W G, so I don't believe any conditions are necessary.
Good, because I was going to ask you to sit down again and be the planner and repeat them.
I mean, you can put on.
Because I can't stand conditioned by the applicant.
I mean, usually it's, those are benefits to the town that we get, and we get the D W G, but I have it, so it, it's not necessary in this case.
How much is the land costing us?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know if it's just the cost of the, uh, survey. It might be the survey work, I, I'm not involved in those details.
No.
I was not involved, I'll give the credit to the town manager and the rec department, who's worked this whole thing. I got involved just because they needed a surveyor, I went out, I got this, you know, coordinated, got the survey done, and now I'm here as the authorized representative, but I don't know any of the, of the details, but.
And neither do I, other than this is the next step.
I have a question about notifying, notification. It looks like you only notified the condo association at Acadia Lane? Not necessary to notify all the owners?
No, that's in the, anything like that is in the R S A, when you live next to a condominium complex, homeowners association, you know, manufacturer housing park, you notify the, the entity.
Okay.
You know, the, the entity.
Common ownership entity, essentially, yeah, okay.
So usually in a homeowners association, the president gets notified, because it's usually their address on, on, as, as being the president, you know, as.
Did we, did we approve that playground last year? With the rocket ships and stuff that we're going to replace there?
Don't think so.
We did not? Okay.
I don't think that came to us.
I don't think so, we, not us, no, I mean, did the town approve it?
Oh, I think they had.
And the residents voted on that.
I think that was part of the C I P for the rec department.
The last year, I just don't remember.
Well, I think it's ongoing, John, they've had some money.
It was a million dollars, that's why I remember.
No, well, I think they came to us originally, five.
It was one, one expensive playground.
And then they cut it back, you know, because they weren't getting anything.
Right.
Going for the whole thing at once.
That's right.
The, the land that we're getting to the lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
Do you know how much?
That's always been a concern.
Thank you.
Not about trading until we own the land.
Fifty grand.
Fifty thousand dollars.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, to secure, to secure our, you know, park, I mean, we did look at options like a couple of years ago, when we first started, you know, when they, they, you know, like looking at options, like what do you do with it? When we didn't own it, we weren't going to invest.
Do you know what the lease was? Do you know what the lease payment was by any chance?
I don't think there was.
I don't think there was one.
Oh, really?
You can use it as long as we don't need it.
Exactly.
There was a charm on the.
But it wasn't.
I think it already, just recently.
Yeah.
I feel the last few years, that's why this came up.
Yeah.
And wasn't that built by volunteers or something?
Yeah, yeah, we worked on that.
Back in the nine, early nineties?
It was quite a, quite a operation.
That would be a weird one, though, like if something ever happened, right?
Yeah, so, you know, if, as long as the planning board is comfortable with this, you know, this is the next step to getting that.
Yeah.
You know, making that clean.
Yeah.
I think it's more there, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I think they were great, people have been gracious to let us.
Oh, absolutely.
Kind of use the land, and, and these people are, are very, you know, were very helpful in, in saying, okay, I understand, well.
Yeah.
You know, we'll work with you.
Well, now that I'm hearing a price, that's not a bad price either. So I'm glad to hear that.
Because who else could buy it? It's not like someone's going to build a, and buy that, I'll give you sixty for a, I'll build a house on it.
No, but it takes away developable land on there.
Well, for them it does, yeah, yeah, but that's part of the, the flag.
You'd have a hard time arguing eminent domain, too, because.
No. Yeah, I mean, that's a, I mean, that, that's a, like a.
For a playground.
After the last resort move, you know, I mean, that's, that's just not, yeah.
From a negotiating perspective, I think it's a generous price for the town to pay. The town got a deal, is what I'm trying to.
Thank you.
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's great, I think they, yeah, they've been, what, what I've heard is they've been, you know, very nice to work with, and then when I needed the letter of authorization right at the end, I, you know, contacted them, back and forth, very, very amenable, so.
Very fair.
Yeah.
Don't you want a motion?
Sure.
Are we ready?
Wait, wait, I have to open the public.
Grill, this apple.
There's no public hearing required.
Cold, it's breaking cold.
So there's no public hearing?
I'm ready.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that the request of the Town of Exeter, planning board, planning board case number twenty-three dash fourteen, for a lot line adjustment, approval be approved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need any conditions there? Don't you need the normal conditions?
We said there were a couple. No, I just went through that. I mean, the monumentation, we will set. I mean, it's, it's ours, we're, we're going to set them. I mean, you could make that. The DWG, we paid for the survey and I have it.
Okay.
So usually, usually we make that a condition so I can, I get the DWG, but we, we...
I think they asked the town planner to submit our normal conditions for this approval.
Normal condition would be all monumental.
We need to withdraw our motion. Motion and second, or no? Are you joking or something?
Are people watching this on television?
I think we have to do it right.
All monumentations shall be set. Only one.
I joked, but I'm serious.
Yeah, all monumentations shall be set in accordance with Section 9.25 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations.
Thank you.
We do not need the DWG.
Okay.
All right, I will withdraw my original motion.
And I will withdraw my second.
And I'll read it again. Who are you writing over the coal paper?
It's such a good read.
I move at the request of Town of Exeter Planning Board, Planning Board Case Number 23-14, for a lot line adjustment. Approval be approved with the conditions as noted.
Second.
Okay. Hand vote. Right hand, if you vote in favor, raise your right hand, please. Opposition? Abstention? unanimous vote? Yay!
You need an easy button.
Is there any master plan discussion this evening?
There, I just have one thing. There was a master plan oversight committee meeting last week and we went through all of the, we started going through the recommendations to do an evaluation that have come out, come out of the bike scull and pedestrian master plan. And we got through about half of them and then we res, we scheduled another meeting, actually for this morning, to finish it up. But I realized a couple of days ago that I overbooked and I had like three meetings this morning, so I had, we had to cancel, but we're going to have it in the near future and finish that up.
Okay. Land use regulations review, we still went on?
Yeah, that's, that's going to start back up on the 28th. We, we obviously, we were getting busy and we're staying.
Yeah.
We had five, well, seven things on the agendas, so we got busy, so I put them, but I'm starting that back up, I'll have on the 28th. I think we have plenty of time to get a couple and it's probably pretty good timing. So we'll ramp up for, you know, December, kind of review of the, of the potential zoning ordinance amendments.
Any field modifications of interest?
Field modifications? No, no, there was, oh, I already told you about that last meeting, that we gave some money back for the Guinea Road and so forth. Okay, we haven't, we haven't done anything new, but we're researching the other ones.
Yep.
What did he do? He gave money back for what?
First, your development. The, the developer who developed that property was, the planning board gave a couple of exactions on for a variety of improvements, including the intersection of Guinea Road and Hampton Road, some money for a traffic light at Guinea Road and Hampton Road, some widening. And, and even in the planning board minutes, one of them was, one of the stipulations was we'll give the money back if, if, you know, if we don't approve it. And it went, the lot, the traffic light. And the traffic light went to the voters the following year after it was approved and they voted it down. So it should have been given back 20 years ago. But the other exactions for the other items, you have six, in accordance with state law, you have six years to use it. You can form an exemption, but then you got to come up for a proportional share. It's usually not the whole thing. If it's the whole thing, you should do it. But usually in this case, it was, it was for, like, kind of unspecified improvements. That's not ideal either, but, you know, when you, when you specify an improvement, you should know exactly what it is, how much it costs and what the proportional share is. But that wasn't done in the past, so it was just this $50,000 amount for intersection improvements, but we didn't use any of it. And we still had it after 20 years and we really shouldn't use it now. We should give it back in accordance with state law.
So they never thought about widening the road a little bit or something?
No, they might have thought about it, but they didn't do it.
Okay.
You know, you have to expend the funds within six years or you're obligated to give it back.
I was at the last meeting, so I didn't hear that.
Okay, yeah. I figured you'd be interested.
If you gave the money to the association, I'd be more interested.
Well, the association didn't give it to us. We give it to who gave it to us, yeah.
Any bond or letter of credit reduction releases?
No, not outside of that, no.
Okay.
And then I do have a couple of just, I have a new set of site plan review and subdivision regulations as amended August with the, with the changes we adopted regarding the wetlands. And I have them for your handbooks, so three whole punched here. And I have a capital improvement adopt plan for your thing. So they're right here. Take them if you would like them, file on your way out.
I need to talk to some...
Voice chair has a, voice chair has a question here?
I have a question, Dave. It's unrelated to Exeter, but it's related to real estate. And I think the board may benefit from hearing your insight. I have an opinion on this question, but I wanted to hear yours. So I'm involved in the real estate world in my professional career and a question came up on a project of wetlands, a property that's being developed at, of Butts Wetlands. And is just bark mulch along the buffer up to the wetland, putting down bark mulch, is that considered a proper and permanent stabilization method with about a 45 degree or so pitch? Pretty significant pitch to it? I'm curious on that.
It shouldn't be.
45 degree pitch is steep.
Yeah.
That's steep.
That's gone the first time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's like Tuckerman's Ravine, the head wall of Tuckerman's Ravine's 53 and that's like scary.
Has it currently grassed on anything or?
No, it was all disturbed, put in a new road.
Okay, all disturbed, yeah, all right.
And that's what is being proposed. And I'm just, I wanted to hear your opinion on that because, like I said, I have mine, but I wanted to get your opinion.
I'm not an engineer and I don't design plans with erosion control, but I've seen enough of them to know that any type of slope that goes above three to one, you usually see some sort of erosion control blankets coupled with hay bales and actually staked hay bales that are staked into the ground. And I mean, just mulch on the ground, I mean, usually you see it in some sort of silt sock.
There's, there is the, what do you call it? The black paper.
Yeah, silt fencing.
Yeah. I, I think it's keeping out of the wetlands now, but my question is, is that a permanent solution, like just leaving bark mulch there for, just to overgrow or something?
Oh, I got you, yeah. There is some people do that. They leave mounds of, of bark mulch, so then they don't have to go, because like, what do you, what do you find like two years later after you, after you go to a site that's been developed and you walk around the perimeter? Silt fence is still there.
Right.
No one ever pulls it.
Right.
And it just grows in there and it, you know, it should be removed.
Right.
And sometimes I, I like, used to get it, because I used to go out on COs here, it's set up differently. I would always make them get the...
Pull it?
Yeah, pull it, you know, get it out of there, as long as it was stabilized.
Sure.
You know, but it usually is, by the time you're a CO, it should be stabilized, depending on time of year. But, um, so I don't know, I, it doesn't sound right in a 45 degree slope because silt fence will blow out at that. You don't usually see it. You'll see it in combination with hay bales, staked hay bales to slow down the, you know, break it before it hits that silt fence.
Right.
So that's 45 degree.
And my other question was, and I hope I know the answer to this one too, is the product that I'm dealing with, it's a, it's going to be a private road, association owned road. So, you know, the town gets involved and the town kind of gets cut free. And is it normal that the infrastructure, town, water and sewer would be owned at that point by the association from the public roadway into the, you know, significant number unit project? I would think that would become their ownership, right? That the water and sewer lines become part of the private infrastructure, right?
I guess it depends on the town, but if it was here, that is the case. It's almost like it's a single service and the shut off is at the road or whatever. We have a shut off at the road. It might be individual shut offs with individual meters, but we, we treat it like it's on private property. It's, it's the, you know, we don't own it. We own the main stem, you know, on the, on the public road, but then you own to the connection.
Yeah. And then the other, quite the last question I have on that is, it is going to be a private road. And what responsibility does the town have to ensure that it's, I know it wouldn't necessarily be built to town specs because it's a private road, but wouldn't they make, would the town ensure that, you know, the top coat is done properly, that it's bonded essentially?
Oh, absolutely, because you're either talking about a single family lot or a homeowner associated, or both.
It's an association and...
But it's single on lots?
Condom, condominium project.
Condom. Oh, condominium, no lots.
Correct.
Okay. But either way, if you don't bond that, I mean, you don't have to necessarily bond it unless a property transfers. Once a property transfers, I mean, you, you get, like, and then they don't finish the top coat and then they go out and then there's innocent landowners in there, in condo unit owners. Like that happened in Florida in 2005, like so much. It just wiped out the developers. They didn't have any bonding and they had half a development unfinished and no money to finish it. But, so the, really the owners that had bought in prior to, you know, going bankrupt, yeah, are out of luck, so absolutely bond it. Some people, like sometimes we do that, we talk about like we bond at the time of, you know, you can't transfer it. Because some people are just like, I'm going to build out everything, I'm not going to... So then if they go and, if they go under, we got enough to seed loam and seed stabilize the site and get it out. We're not going to necessarily finish the project, but if some, someone lives there already, then you really have to go in. So absolutely bond it from that standpoint.
That was, that's very helpful.
Why don't, why don't we require a larger bond?
What do you mean?
Why wouldn't we require enough, not to, to finish, but to fix everything that's not done?
Well, he's saying, we never sell. He was, he was talking about if there were no transfers.
Yeah. Once, so, if there's no transfers and they want to build it out, all we would like to secure is like, we're not going to go and finish it if it's just one, because someone else will come in.
Right.
Another developer will come in, buy the project and, and finish it. But as long as there's nobody bought it.
Innocent.
Exactly, innocent land, yeah, innocent people who bought in. It's just basically, we just want to go in, stabilize it. So we'll keep a, you know, 150, $200,000 boss so we can go in, loam, seed, stabilize, put the erosion control until the, you know, vegetation grows up and it's all stabilized and then back away. But if someone's coming in, if someone wants to, you know, the, they want to sell the first lot and the road's, you know, proposed to be 700 feet, then we will bond for everything. Every, you know, sidewalk, curbing, roadway, everything. So, and plus, I think 20% or something like that. It's more, you know, it's more to, to cover. So if that happens, then we have the ability to contract that out and, and get that. Actually, that's happening right now. I'm, I'm sending a letter to a developer because they, they didn't do one thing that they were supposed to do on a project. And we're still holding escrow and I tried to get them to do it because we don't want to do it, but they've, they're, they're not doing it, so. I got to send them a letter telling them I'm going to pull the, use the cash, say the cash escrow, and I'll use the cash to, to do the, do the improvement that needs to be done. And then, no, I'll, I'll give them like 30, 45 days to, to respond and to do it and they're not going to, so then I'll just, I'll just go out and use the funds to do it.
Now, I'm here, I'm a little concerned about what we've just been doing. Is this going to appear as part of our official minutes?
Yes.
Of this hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Meeting's still going on.
The general discussion, I had a general question.
Okay, all right. I just, well, I'm wanting to be sure that I fully understand the context in which it's going to appear.
And I'm, I'm... Meeting has not been adjourned.
Okay.
Yes, and I...
It's not on the agenda, but it's educational for us.
Okay. General discussion?
Other business.
Other?
Well, okay.
Other business, he brought it up.
All right, all right. As I say, I just wanted to raise that to be sure that, that this, we do the context in which this all is occurring. I have no, I don't think I have any problem with it, but I just want to be sure that all of us are, are fully aware of what has just, we've just done the past 15 minutes, which is, I, again.
No, I think it's good. I think it's educational.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's educational, I agree with that.
And it's, it's stuff we deal with.
Okay.
As a board.
Mr. Chair, could I make a few announcements before we...
Sure, you have a Nancy's announcements time.
I know, sorry. I have my select board hat on now. So number one, the all boards meeting, the second one, has been scheduled.
Oh.
For, yeah, so if people want to put this in your calendars, now's the time to do it. Wednesday, October 11th. Place and time to be determined. I haven't been given that information yet. The next one is Wednesday, October 18th, and that's a right to know training that will be provided. Number three, the Dover site walk that was supposed to happen yesterday did not happen because of the weather, so that is going to be rescheduled sometime in October. Dayton to be determined, likely at 5 o'clock again.